Just looking at, let's say, where MX will go one day. Part of the reason we have planning and public works represented on this project management team is that it is taking a much more comprehensive look than we have in the past. We are looking at investments for people that are biking and walking, so it is a multimodal transportation project, looking at a full range of investments. It's also worth pointing out that in many ways, this is an implementation project. Yes, we're planning. We're doing that technical analysis that's required by the National Environmental Policy Act, which is a good, responsible thing for us to do, regardless of those federal requirements. But it is also an implementation of longstanding policy directives from this body, as well as the lane transportation, lane transit districts board through their long-range transit plan, Envision Eugene, and our transportation system plan. So I just highlighted, coming from the planning and development department's perspective, we are looking at how the transit will actually serve the future residents moving to our community. So as part of Envision Eugene, which this body is very familiar with, we had highlighted key transit corridors, same that we are now studying through the Moving Ahead Project. We expect a lot of our future population growth to be accommodated along those corridors through redevelopment and different mechanisms. So again, this is us putting transportation investments where we anticipate the most people to be located. So we see that as an efficiency of this project and this approach. A couple more things to highlight in this approach is that, as I said, it's transportation for everyone. So if we get into the details or you have questions about that, you'll see that we are analyzing these corridors based on miles of sidewalk, new pedestrian crossings, pedestrian bridge here and there. So there's a lot more there than just the transit investments. But the transit investments are very important, and we are looking at a range of those from what's called fixed route service, which is essentially what you see today being provided by a lane transit district outside of those MX corridors. So the white bus you see on the far left, moving on this continuum to an MX corridor or a bus rapid transit corridor. And then in between those two on the continuum is something we've referred to as the enhanced corridor. So it's somewhere between those where take a lighter approach on the amount of or the infrastructure investment. So it could be something that we've referred to as a Q jump, which essentially allows the bus to bypass points of congestion rather than giving a dedicated guideway or driveline just for the bus throughout the entirety of the corridor. So in that way, the enhanced corridor can be a bit more surgical. The last thing I'll highlight before handing it over to Chris to explain the public involvement is just this different approach and kind of the underpinnings for our project management and for the project itself. So we've intentionally tried to change the conversation when we've met with members of the public. And instead of talking about how bus rapid transit, how MX fits in the corridor, we've taken a more flexible approach and asked how that actually works within each individual corridor, within each individual neighborhood, and essentially taken a lighter approach. We're also looking at all five of these corridors at the same time to gain efficiency. So in the past, we've looked at, we as a community have looked at one corridor, done the public outreach, done the technical analysis, worked through construction, and then started again with another project. And so this is an attempt to be very efficient with how we do high-level environmental analysis through the National Environmental Policy Act. So in that way, we see this being an efficiency of the overall project. That allows us to better integrate transportation, lane use, and the environmental considerations. And of course, having this collaborative approach, we think, is very beneficial to make sure that we are taking that multimodal and more comprehensive approach. The last thing I'll highlight, and you'll hear a little bit more about it, I think from Sasha towards the end, is the scalability or right sizing these investments. So I think it's fair to say that funding is a bit of uncertainty out there. So we want to make sure that as we get the concept designs right throughout this phase that we, as a city, or our partners at LTD, can actually make progress on smaller pieces and parts of these corridors, such as being able to provide the pedestrian crossings, let's say, as an example, even if we don't have funding for the entire build out of a corridor. So in that way, we think we've right sized that in a very fiscally responsible way. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, who can talk about our public involvement.
Thank you, Zach. I'll describe, well, the decision-making structure and the public engagement process. Throughout the Moving Ahead Project, we are gathering input from the community and feedback about the project as it evolves. We also have a sounding board that provides input and feedback about the process, although they do not make a formal recommendation, they do liaise back to the groups that they represent. The sounding board commissions represented are the Eugene Planning Commission, the Human Rights Commission, and Sustainability Commission. Committees represented are the Active Transportation Committee, Lane Transit District Successibility Committee, and LTD's Strategic Planning Committee, and a member of Lane County Public Health. The project management team is comprised of staff and the consultant project team, who together make project recommendations throughout the process. The project oversight committee makes recommendations to the decision-makers and is made up of members of those bodies and executives involved in the process. The final decision-makers are the Lane Transit District Board and you, the Eugene City Council. Here is a list of the people involved in the oversight committee and the sounding board. I won't read them, and I'll hear as they're included in your copy of the slides. They're there for your reference. Our past public engagement gathered input at a series of corridor neighborhood open houses that focused and gave people opportunities to share what they felt was important to them there in their neighborhoods along the corridors. They helped to identify opportunities and constraints on maps and answer questions such as, where are the major destinations? Where will they be in the future? What do you value about this corridor? What are the barriers that make it difficult to get around? And where are there places that it's difficult to cross the street? And crossing the street is an example of where we'll make investments for pedestrian safety, for people walking and biking across and along the corridors. That public engagement provided direct input that shaped the initial design concepts. And then we brought, if I go back a slide, you can see people in the community building the street, if you will, with elements of sidewalks, bike lanes, bus lanes, travel lanes for people driving cars. And that led to a design concept that we brought back out to the community, and people provided feedback on that concept before we moved it in to the technical analysis. Looking forward, throughout the year, we'll be providing opportunities for people to engage in Moving Ahead, to provide feedback about what is important to them as they review the results of the technical analysis. We'll also be talking with stakeholders along the corridors, as well as canvassing the corridors to let people know about their opportunities to provide feedback. We'll hold open houses, conduct surveys, attend neighborhood meetings and community events, and speak with groups interested in the Moving Ahead Project. Sasha is going to provide more detail about selecting investments, but first, I would like to emphasize the components that we'll be using to inform our decision-making process. The technical analysis, as Zach mentioned, is required and a responsible step in the process. To that, that's the orange triangle, to that, the green circle, we'll be adding a triple bottom line evaluation, considering equity for people, their environmental effects on our planet, and economic prosperity. This evaluation reflects our community interests in the various policies that guide us. In combination, the technical analysis and triple bottom line evaluation lead to preferred investment packages that Sasha will describe in more detail now.
Stay on the slide for a second.
Oh, right. Sorry.
Just to speak in a little more detail about what the technical analysis entails and what has led us to the preferred investment package language. So we are about 90% complete with our technical analysis. And that includes essentially looking at roughly 20 different environmental topics, evaluating these alternatives for their impacts and benefits, so we have a better understanding. And that analysis has led us to see that there's generally small differences between the corridors. And there's more than one mode that can, and when I say mode, I mean the enhanced corridor and MX alternatives, that can meet the project's objectives and serve to further the community's vision along these corridors. And so we believe that looking at a preferred investment package, evaluating different packages, and understanding the synergies that different combinations of investments might make will help decision-makers in terms of seeing, is there a system level benefit that we aren't seeing from the individual corridors? So this is a slight shift from how we originally discussed the decision-making process. Some of you are familiar with the terminology locally preferred alternative. We had talked about picking a locally preferred alternative for each corridor and then prioritizing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. We have modified that to say, we are going to look at an investment package. And those packages we plan to analyze would be, we would look at five different packages, what we're calling the bookends. We would evaluate a package that is all of the enhanced corridor investments along these five blue lines, so we can see what potential ridership synergies there are at that level of investment. And then the other side of that is, we would also analyze all of the MX alternatives as one package with MLK, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard is only enhanced corridor alternative and no built that was advanced. And so we would understand from there what the bookends of the different levels of investment are. And then in the middle are three different packages we've combined based on what we've learned from the technical analysis thus far, with also what we've heard from the community, from the input we've received, from the past engagement cycles. So these packages, I just want to clarify, they're not going to be set in stone. Once they're analyzed, the different combinations, we're going to share their results with the community and ask them, what do you like about these individual packages? What do you dislike? What do you think needs to be changed? And I'll go into a little more detail in the project's schedule coming up. But again, it goes back to what Chris emphasized, as getting input and then a feedback loop. So we will make refinements to those packages based on what we hear from the community that we hope will lead to the final decision point, which is selection of a preferred investment package. And that will be the question we pose to you and the LTD board. So this is our tentative, our project's schedule. As you see, we hope to complete decision-making at the end of this year, but I want to say before going into detail, we look to you to provide feedback to us about the case of the decision-making process, and if you feel there need to be changes incorporated. We plan to meet with you prior to your summer recess, and that includes, that would be a joint, we propose a joint work session with the LTD board, and we would be sharing the results of the full technical analysis. So essentially, right before the release of what the report is called, the Alternatives Analysis, is published to the public, we would like to come to you to share those results. And that includes the evaluation of packages and what we've learned from that. Then we propose two separate public comment periods. So again, we can do that input and feedback loop where we share the results of the Alternatives Analysis Report, the technical analysis, with the community. We ask them those questions, does it, what do you like, what do you not like? How can we modify that? And then we come to you to share what we've heard. And then we make changes, modifications to those packages, and take them back out. And so then we propose a joint public hearing, and then separate deliberations for your final decision of selecting a preferred package of investments. So that is what we have right now for you, and we'd like to take any questions.
Great, thank you. So I have Emily in the queue, Ellen, anybody else? Thank you very much, Emily. I'll let you take your way.
Thank you for that. It was very informative to catch us up. There's a pretty simple question, but the way we're deciding, it says both council and LTD, how does that work? What if we disagree? Do we add up all our votes? Arm wrestle? What happens?
Well, we're seeking to align our decisions together. We have, you saw the slide of the schedule that nominally ends at the end of this calendar year. We built into that opportunities for deliberation separately. We have a joint public hearing and then separate deliberation, and then ideally, I think we're taking action separately. But if we need more time to deliberate, to communicate back and forth between the two decision-making bodies, you and the LTD board, then we'll do that. If we need more time to discuss, we'll do that, and we can move into 2019 if that's necessary, so that we do align the decisions.
And if I may, if they happen to be separate decisions, it would lead to another set of series of meetings to figure out, how can we get those decisions in alignment?
Well, there's some pressure to agree.
Yeah.
So you're looking for consensus, not a vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ellen?
Can I just make one clarification? Yes, for sure consensus, but at some point, the council will actually probably have to take a vote on a decision for a preferred, for certain packages. So there will be some sort of vote, but hopefully, based on a consensus between the two bodies.
Will LTD also take a vote?
Yeah, they'll have to actually take.
On the same stuff?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Ellen?
Yeah, and remember that the goal of doing this whole process was to cut the eight to 10 years it took to get the first two legs, and cut that lead time down to a reasonable amount, so that by looking at them all together, we've already reduced that amount of time for some of the routes. Question about the, you can go back to the map, a question about the Main McVeigh one. That's outside this process because it's ahead of this analysis?
At the time we started the Moving Head Project, it was ahead of this analysis. It is now in a different process with the city of Springfield, and they have a series of Main Street projects that they're working on coordinating the projects.
Is that, has it done NEPA analysis?
It has not completed a NEPA analysis.
So in that regard, these are all ahead of that. So I think it's great that we did a NEPA analysis on all the different options, which is an environmental review. Maybe you can give us a high-level summary of what was looked at in the NEPA environmental analysis and what the results were.
Happy to. So the, I'll just hit on the key topics that I know have traditionally been of interest to the community. So acquisitions and displacements, what type of footprint these different alternatives would have on outside of the right-of-way? That's part of the analysis. Air quality, water quality, trees, and then transportation impacts and benefits as well. So from the transit perspective, transit travel time and increase in ridership based on the level of investment. And then transportation more broadly, looking at safety and how these different alternatives can improve safety along the corridors.
And greenhouse gas impacts as well.
Yes, yes.
Good. Did you also look at reduced congestion time and how much faster it takes to get through the corridor with an MX? Is that part of the NEPA or is that part of a separate analysis?
It's part of, from the transportation analysis, we do look at transit travel time and what is the projection in terms of reduced time it takes for the transit vehicle to get through the corridor.
And also everybody else, because there's less cars on the road?
It looks at key intersections and the estimated congestion at those intersections.
Okay. And previously, we got a great deal of our costs covered by federal grants, as much as 80% federal and 20% state on the first leg, anyway. And things have changed in two ways. When we were doing that the first time around, we were the only ones doing it with Cleveland, and so it was kind of, we were the only game in town. And so now there's lots of people that want to follow this mode, and we've actually become a model for this, have lots of people visit, figure out how we are doing this so well. And so there's many more communities in the queue. And then the second way is change is the lack of federal dollars that are available for these kind of projects. So what are we looking at for these next phases? We're not obviously looking at what we did for Phase 1 and Phase 2, which was almost all the cost covered by federal and state. So what are we looking for in terms of these next MX routes, in terms of competition and availability of funding?
I can speak twofold. I just want to emphasize a point Zach made earlier in the presentation, that we believe these packages will allow us to be more strategic in implementation, given the funding realities that we face. But more specifically, to your question about Federal Transit Administration Small Starts Grants, what we are hearing is that we cannot expect the 20-80 match makeup, as has been done in the past, that it would more likely be a 50% local match. It is much more competitive, and there is just in general uncertainty about the Small Starts Grant Program at the federal level.
You mean its existence and whether it's going to continue at the level it's at? And just ballpark, how many communities are interested in this kind of stuff? Like, what's the queue look like? Hundreds?
Well, just to speak to the Pacific Northwest, some of it is geographic competition. Portland and Seattle both have bus rapid transit programs that they're looking at. They have multiple lines that they would like to investigate for bus rapid transit.
Okay, thanks. To add to the funding makeup, there's also a Eugene component, possibly federal funds and monies that we get through the Metropolitan Planning Organization that can fund those investments for people walking and biking along the corridors or connecting to them as those needs arise. We will also necessarily need to look at the pavement to support the loads of the vehicles traveling along the corridors, depending on which vehicle that is.
Yeah, it kind of brings up, would road bond monies be able to help do this?
Potentially.
In a future, maybe the next round or something like that.
Right. So in that scenario, we could identify the pavement needs along the key corridors and include what we would say concrete pavement lanes for MX vehicles in the bond.
Right, because it's concrete, not asphalt, because the vehicles are so heavier, much heavier, that they need the concrete to maintain the integrity of the road.
Yes.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Alan touched on several of my questions, so I'm going to kind of pivot here off the top of my head while I'm thinking about this. Do you happen to know what the final cost was for the West 11th Project as a whole?
It was roughly $100 million.
So would you say that each of these legs face similar cost estimates, considerably less for some? How would you characterize that?
They're actually, I would characterize them as considerably less. We looked at and tried to maintain a relatively low level of infrastructure investment in terms of staying within the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way as much as possible. And so the highest corridor our estimate, I can just pull it up for you really quickly, is Coburg, which, so that is above, I would say, the West Eugene total. It's above $100 million, but the rest are more, are significantly lower in range.
Total package, since we're looking at this as a package, number is roughly, what, estimate so far?
So those bookends that we talked about, the enhanced quarter package versus the MX package, the enhanced quarter is $148 million total for the package, and then the MX package would be over $300 million.
The reason I ask that question is, have you begun to work on strategies, if it ends up being a 50-50, for what that looks like at the state and local level?
I would say we need to start working on those strategies.
That's a mighty big number to me, especially when ODOT didn't fund really or fix the Beltline in any realistic sense.
That is a mighty number. I would think when these packages come out on the analysis, it's, I don't think anyone's thinking that it will be the full, the bookend of all MX realistically. And that's what's so wonderful about this scalable, flexible idea of enhanced corridors.
I will watch the Coburg, if, with great interest there is that flows into my award, and I know that there's been a lot of conversation on that over the last couple of years. Would you characterize that that plan has with the less developed plan, in-lane travel through most of Coburg Road, a lot of, is there a percentage you'd assign?
It's mostly mixed traffic in Coburg. As you probably wouldn't be surprised, it's targeting, it's looking at the key intersections, such as Beltline, where there is congestion, and from a transit perspective, where we do really suffer travel time delays.
Already, on the Coburg Road corridor northbound at Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, there's a Q jump lane or a separate lane for buses and their own traffic signal, so that they can bypass congestion or go in front of automobile traffic. That's an element, something like that, you might see at Beltline.
Yeah, from Crescent there, just to get downtown, I have, on many occasions, depending on time of day, that can take half hour, 40 minutes, better sometimes. Adding a bus to that corridor seems challenging to my unlearned view of the, all of the potential fixes there so far, so. But the cost, I think, is the one that I'll be interested to see how that comes forward. How long do you see before that's a reality, that we're going to have that local discussion about how it gets paid for?
I guess, throwing it out there, I would say that as soon as the preferred package is selected, that would, the next step would be having that conversation and creating funding strategies.
And maybe you're better poised to speak to this, Sasha, about the next step after selecting the packages, and we move into another phase of environmental review, more detailed design work to prepare plans for construction and funding.
I think the funding would come first before that.
So middle of '19, something like that?
'19, something.
Huh.
What that might look like is in the package, depending on what funding is available, we might prioritize investments and sequence them within that portfolio of overall investments based on the funding stream that we might anticipate.
Brick it up into much smaller bite-sized pieces and look for how you fit it in.
Yep.
By the summer of '19, we'll know whether or not the legislature has any appetite to do anything else with transportation that might actually help us with the plan that I've sat on the ODOT's Beltline Steering, redesigned Steering Committee for nine years now, waiting for a funding package that could actually see that done. And that's our area's highest transportation priority for that rebuild, and I don't think we can say that they, they gave us a realistic, the legislature gave us realistic hope that that will get fixed. So by '19, we'll know that. For me, that's a much higher priority to focus in North Eugene than this is. So I hope we have that conversation sooner rather than later. Thank you.
There'll be an open house for.
Yeah, on the 24th.
On the 24th Tuesday. I can't remember the location right off.
I think it's at North Eugene, isn't it?
Yeah, North Eugene.
Yeah, on Tuesday, Tuesday evening.
As the transit provider, we're also interested in that conversation as well.
Yeah, yeah. That'll be interesting. Thank you very much.
Chris?
Thank you for this presentation. This is really important information to have, and I think the update is valuable, too, since the last time we visited this. With a lot of the conversation that is going through my head and that I'm hearing, it really, it gets back to the, you can have it fast, right or cheap, pick any two. And one of the concerns I have is that in the effort to try to do this with the money we have available, or with the funding we can find, and also get it done before I'm dead of old age, that's going to force us to compromise on doing what we really should do on some of these corridors. And the one that comes to mind is Coburg Road. If you did Coburg Road the way it should be done...
If you did Coburg Road the way it should be done, it would be expensive and fairly time-consuming, and you would have to go through a lot of struggle to do it. And I'm worried that we will make an investment of whatever size in Coburg Road using enhanced corridors and mixed traffic, and it's really not what you need to do to solve that problem. It's already bad traffic-wise, and to just run MX buses in the same lanes and think that's somehow going to be better, I think is challenging. But I'm worried that we as a community lack the strength of will to do the right thing, do the way it should be done. And so I guess, I'm worried that we'll make the investment, we'll do it as quickly as we can, we'll get something put together, but ultimately we'll be unsatisfactory because it's really not the right thing, because we went with what we could afford to do and what was faster to do. And that, and the push will then be on doing what we really should do. I don't have an answer, I'm just posing my anxiety over, you know what you should do, but you haven't got the money and you haven't got the time, and I think that's a real stressful situation for me.
I think that's fair anxiety. So remember, we do have what we refer to as no build as a selection, as one of the options for each corridor, and we need to figure out a way to message to this so the pub, so everyone understands. But when, in this conversation around packages and no build, when we say no build, it doesn't mean not now, it might just be, it might, it might, it doesn't mean not never, it just means the timing isn't right, and maybe, in, to echo your anxiety, maybe Coburg is an area that needs more thorough study to look at more infrastructure investments.
Yeah, with that ultimately, and I know this is all guessing, predicting the future is hard to do. If we were to say it needs more study, we need another five years, we need another 10 years to really look at it, wouldn't that make it more expensive when we finally do get around to doing it? By a significant factor?
Yes.
We hope that as we, if we choose not now and maybe sometime later, or if we choose an enhanced corridor there, that the decisions that we make and the design concepts that are developed are scalable, that one can support the other, that an enhanced corridor investment could lead to an MX corridor construction at some point in the future, so that we have some efficiencies in the design and operation in the corridor. Trying to get the best outcome for that corridor in particular.
And I completely agree, and I understand the dilemma you're in. I mean, we're all in the same dilemma, and that's what's so challenging, is we, we need to do something, but we're really constrained by the fact that we can't do everything we'd like to do for the money we'd like to do and the time we'd like to do. And so where will we make the compromise? And I, and I think we should go into this process very aware of exactly what compromises we're going to be making, so that we can at least do them consciously as opposed to having them sneak up on us later on.
I think that's a really good point, and it gets back to what Councilor Semple asked earlier about the decision-making process. We've structured Moving Ahead to provide informed decision-making, that the analysis that we conduct from the technical side, from the triple bottom line, support the information that you need as decision-makers to make the best decision for our community. And that might be a difficult solution, but we'll, we'll be informed about the trade-offs to consider in doing so.
Betty?
Thank you. I see you mentioned walking and biking as a part of transportation for everyone. I wonder if what's being done about walking, I understand there have been plans for pedestrian pathways, for example, in the Wayne Morris Park area, that have never had anything done for them. It seems, this seems to be related to money, it would cost less to improve pedestrian facilities and biking facilities than big roads. Now, it's really impossible, almost impossible to walk some places, you come to a dead end and there's no place to go. On bicycle too, suddenly it says bike lane ends, and what are you supposed to do? I hope that someone is looking at things from the point of view of a pedestrian and a cyclist. Going out Coburg Road, I don't know how, you can get across the bridge, but how, where do you go then? It's a, it is very difficult for pedestrians, I think, in lots of places, and I hope that someone is going out walking and seeing what it's, actually doing the walking and seeing what it's like.
I'll try to break that into a couple of components. Specifically for Moving Ahead, we're looking at how people move through and across the corridors, whether they're walking or they're biking. The crossing improvements might be what you've seen with these stutter flash or rectangular rapid flashing beacons with, with islands and the flashing lights that help people more safely cross the street and provide sidewalk connectivity, like you saw improved on West 11th Avenue, that, that didn't exist before. And then outside of the Moving Ahead corridors, we have an accessible transportation committee that reviews projects and provides feedback to staff as we implement a bicycle and pedestrian strategic plan to get exactly what you're talking about, increased connectivity within our neighborhood and throughout our community, and perhaps more importantly, beyond the connectivity, increasing comfort for people walking and biking. Because, just because it's there, and this gets back to a presentation that we had about South Lamont Street, when I responded to Councilor Zelenka talking about connectivity there and connecting the systems, it's, the next step is to make it a comfortable place for people to be, and then we hope to see the opportunity to reach our goal of tripling the amount of people walking, biking, or riding the bus that's identified in the Eugene 2035 Transportation System.
I do know you're talking mainly about buses right now, but I did read here, transportation for everyone, including walking and biking.
It is everyone. It is walking, biking, and riding the bus.
I remember a, I think it was a two-day conference on walkability on South Lamont many years ago, about 10 years ago, I think. Nothing came of it, but--
Well, that led to--
Experts were brought in and lots of people met and talked.
The study and the test we did.
Yeah, we're, we're moving forward with implementing that vision. In 2019, the South Lamont Street will be reconstructed and we'll have the bike lanes that were part of that vision.
Thank you.
I just, thank you. I have just one, when you talk about the packages, it may be evident to everyone else what we're actually talking about that's within those packages, but could you give me the elevator speech if I had to explain to a constituent what one of those packages actually means?
Making strategic investments and choosing enhanced corridor or MX or no build for, there'd be a combination, looking at these five corridors, each one of those quarters would have either a no build, an enhanced corridor, an MX alternative selected, and so it's a, we're looking at packages that have different combinations, so we can understand if there is--
So combinations of--
Like, say for example, you have, since there's, there's community support for bus rapid transit or MX service on River Road, and what might we do on a parallel corridor on Highway 99? Would we pair that with an enhanced corridor or MX service? And then how does that connect out to Lang Community College? Is it enhanced corridor or MX? And there's some--
Okay.
--trade-offs perhaps with--
Thank you.
Maybe I could couple a little bit.
Yes.
That's everything from dedicated MX lanes to in-traffic with turnouts and enhanced corridors which have maybe turnout or dedicated queues for the, jump in the things, to more pedestrian paths and sidewalk, better sidewalk and bike lanes. So all of that could be inside the package.
And the package--
It improves all of the--
And it's all of, and so you're looking at all, that there would be different combinations across those possible corridors?
Exactly, and we're analyzing them to see--
In different places.
In different places.
If those different combinations, if there's ones that have better system-wide benefits in terms of increasing transit ridership.
There might be some parts of Coburg Road that have a dedicated lane, some parts where there's traffic and better sidewalks and things like that.
Okay, thank you. That was not clear to me, so thank you very much.
That's helpful.
And I think we're done, everybody's had questions? Thank you very much for that report.
Thank you very--
I'll just conclude also by offering a one-on-one briefings with anybody who does want to get into the more detailed aspects of the package, the analysis. I know in 45 minutes, it's tough to cover all of those details, so we're happy to provide that if anybody's interested.
I would just add that there's maps of each of the corridors which show what these improvements are and where they would be relatively speaking, not finalized by any chance, but--
Correct.
You get a more detailed sense of it.
Where are the maps?
We can provide them. We've got them on our project webpage and we'll be sharing them at all of the public workshops, certainly.
Yeah, isn't it just MovingAhead?
MovingAhead.org for those watching.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much. That was very informative and exciting. Thanks so much.
Hey, welcome, and I guess we're ready for round two here.
Take us off, take us away on this other item.
I am happy to do so. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Mike McCarron with the Planning and Development Department, and this work session provides an opportunity to discuss whether Eugene should adopt 1,000-foot separation between retail marijuana businesses. And the council discussed this option last year in March and July and decided not to take any action after those conversations. The state of Oregon allows communities to establish the separation requirement if we so choose, and of the 10 largest Oregon cities, the following do have 1,000-foot separation standard. Portland, Hillsborough, Beaverton, Gresham, and Bend. Cities who do not have one include Salem, Corvallis, Springfield, and Medford. Our land use code considers retail marijuana businesses as specialty stores, and they're permitted in the C1, C2, C3 zones. And the Oregon Liquor Control Commission requires the city to verify that a proposed retail business is in the right zone as part of their state application process. There are currently 50 state-approved licenses for Eugene, and so these are approved licenses, not necessarily operating businesses. And of the approved licenses, those 50, about 70% of them would be within 1,000 feet of another approved location, so a majority. And you have an Attachment A map that shows the general locations of all those licenses. If the council directs the city manager to adopt a new standard, the regular code amendment process to update Chapter 9 of our land use code would be followed, and that usually takes about six to nine months on average, based on past code amendment processes. And I've placed a suggested, a modified suggested motion in front of you just to help clarify the one that was in the ADIS. A draft ordinance, Attachment B, has also been provided. We did that at the last work session, and so probably would be modified, but it gives you a sense of how the standard would be incorporated into Chapter 9. And I'm available for any questions you might have.
Okay, I have Emily in the queue, anybody else? Take it away.
Thank you. This is the third time, and I'd like to be done with it. I have been asked since before I was sworn in to deal with this issue. I have received many emails, I think you probably have too, over the last months asking for this. I was at the Downtown Merchants today, and they all want to have this. It's endorsed by DEM, DEI, Downtown Neighbors Association, the Chamber, and the Technical Associates of Oregon. So the only email I got against it was, was late today from the Kiva saying that marijuana shops are the same as grocery stores and bookstores, and we shouldn't do this. So it is true that we've, we've had some competition reducing this, but the outcry from the downtown businesses and merchants is really loud, and I would like to be able to satisfy their concerns, both about the daycare being close, and that we're trying so hard to revitalize downtown, and certainly Eugene is not against marijuana, but I believe we could have a sufficient supply with the buffer. So I really encourage us to just, just quickly say, okay, we're done, let's do it. One question is, I'm surprised it would take six to nine months. I thought all we had to, all we had to do was write an ordinance, have a public hearing, and sign it. So why is it more complicated than that?
And I'm looking at Catherine, but the typical process would be if the council directed the city manager to initiate a code amendment process, then we would work with the city attorney's office to, adding a new standard, there are some legal questions we'd have to consider. One is, since the state does have their process to approve a license, would those already approved licenses have standing and count as a location even though the retail business may not have been opened yet? And so we would have those kind of discussions. We'd also look at the proposed ordinance before we would start looking at the next available time for Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing, and then that would go through the typical process of having possibly a work session or a public hearing at the Planning Commission with recommendations, and then that similar process here at the council.
And I'll, and I'll jump in real quick. The first issue that Mike raised is, it, there'll be those important questions to answer, but that's kind of the implementation piece, and what I think I hear you asking is to get the ordinance in place. And it is, as proposed would be, and where we think it fits the best, is in our land use code, which has the Planning Commission before it comes to council.
And it has to go to the Planning Commission before we can do anything?
As an amendment to Chapter 9, it has to go to the planning. If you initiate a code amendment to Chapter 9, it must go to the Planning Commission. Do you have to put it in Chapter 9? No, you don't have to. There's, there, we could try to figure out a different spot. Chapter 9 makes the most sense, it had, it has the most ease of fitting in. If the direction from council is that you want to do a code amendment and you want to get it done as quick as possible, we can figure out a different place in the code other than Chapter 9 to try to fit it. And then you've eliminated the timeline for the Planning Commission process.
What have other cities done? Where have they put it in their code since we have examples?
So I did bring Assistant City Attorney Lauren Summers with me because she has more experience with this, and has actually worked with some other prior to us getting her in-house at the city with some smaller cities, so she can speak to that.
So Councilor Semple, good question. What I personally have seen is a number of cities have put these types of buffers in their land use codes. That's fairly common. What I have also seen is cities putting them in their business license, business registration code provisions. Usually that is attached to a requirement for a business license for recreational marijuana retailers. We don't currently have that in our code. So I've seen it both ways. I would say more so in land use codes, but it's not uncommon to find them in other places.
Is there an advantage to having it in the land use code as opposed to the business?
Well, from, I'll just jump in here. From a code administration aspect for staff, when we are working with applicants, customers, and we're explaining our land use code, which there's a lot of standards there, this would be perhaps the only one that I'm aware of where we would have those standards for what we consider to be just a specialty store, retail specialty store, in an admin rule or through a different process. So it would kind of just be different where, right now, the land use code would just have all the standards to apply to general businesses in the same chapter, rather than creating an alternate kind of parallel chapter that have standards that apply to those, other standards that apply to the business.
And this ordinance that we've got, what is, which way does it go, land use or business?
That's a proposed Chapter 9 amendment, so it's land use. And that was just, that was really an initial thing that was developed, just as an option, a way of getting there. But again, if there is a desire, we can figure out a way to not have this in 9. There are, there are ways to do that.
I would really encourage us to do a faster approach. I think because we've waited a whole year, and the merchants, business owners are, they're really quite upset about this, and I just, I don't see it as it needs to be in the code. To me, it's, it is more of a business thing. I'd also like to be sure that anybody that's open already is grandfathered in. I had heard that-- I had heard that licenses were guided by the rules that were in place when the license is actually given rather than when it's applied for, so you know if that's correct.
Counsel Sumbo, that's a good question. OLCC is the entity that grants the licenses. And as Mike was mentioning, the city's part of that whole process is submitting a land use compatibility statement where OLCC asks the city, hey, we've got a license application for this particular site. Under your code, are they allowed to locate at that site? Other than that, the city's not really involved, and so I'm not exactly sure what OLCC looks at or the timing of that.
So if you have a license, you should quick open up?
Well, if someone has been granted a license, then they, under state law, have the ability to operate at the premises for which the license is granted. I don't off the top of my head how long those licenses are good for you. Do you need to reapply periodically?
There was something in here about how that had to actually be open, not just have a license. And I think that could be problematic if somebody's put a lot of investment into both the place and the license, and then they can't go forward because they're not open in time. So that's a concern.
Yeah, in the ADIS, I did include just that we would have that conversation, but I think it may turn out that it would be easiest to consider that once OLCC issues that license, that we would honor that, and there would not need to be an opening of the business for the separation.
Thank you, I think that's important.
Further discussion for that.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead quickly.
Chris?
Thank you. Couple of questions to help clarify where I want to go. Would it be possible, you know, talking about people that have already applied and think they have approval to go ahead and build in a certain location versus new applications, is it possible to implement a moratorium on new applications for a certain period of time while we work this through?
Counsel Prior, that's a good question. The only way, under state law, the only provision for a moratorium is if a community decided to ban a all or a certain subset of recreational marijuana facilities in the community. Once that, the process for that is that the council adopts an ordinance, and then it goes to a vote. And at the time that the council adopts an ordinance, OLCC will discontinue issuing licenses until that vote happens. Other than that, I'm not aware of any provisions in state law that would cause OLCC to refuse to issue licenses unless, you know, the person who is applying for the license could not locate in a certain place under city code.
Okay, so you'd have to go through like a three-stage process, and it would be difficult. Second question, what are other examples of specialty stores? You talked about this being in the category specialty stores. What's another example of a specialty store?
Well, this is kind of a catch-all category that handles basically any retail store that is not otherwise listed. So I think grocery store, bookstore, there's some things that are listed, but if you're selling something, I don't think a gift shop is listed specifically as a separate line item. So that would be an example of a specialty store.
Okay, so it could actually be a category that includes a lot of different kinds of stores?
Correct.
Okay, so its categorization as a specialty store isn't somehow unique to the fact that it's a marijuana dispensary, right? Okay, so as you talk about this, if in my head I wanted to be clear, I could substitute the word bookstore. And so you could say, do we need to have 1,000-foot buffer between bookstores?
Correct.
Which then, for my purposes, for my head, says, is this about commerce or is this about marijuana? Do we need a buffer between other kinds of stores? Or is it specifically because it is marijuana? That's a factor for me. Can you tell me how many applications we've received in the last six months?
We don't. So referring to our land use compatibilities, applications?
Yeah.
In the last six months, I don't know specifically. Based on what we've seen come into the permit center, they definitely have slowed, I think, with the last six-month period, maybe than the average per month in the year prior to that, when more and more businesses have been established.
Sure.
I would estimate 10 to 15.
In the last six months, we've had 10 to 15 applications?
In the last six months.
And in the last six months, I think you alluded to it, how many stores have closed in the last six months?
And that I don't know. We have not done on-the-ground research with the number of applications issued by the state and the number of operating businesses. Anecdotally, in my neighborhood, on West 11th near Polk Street, there's a business that has closed there that I'm aware of, but I'm not aware of any other specific ones.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, are we still experiencing a huge growth and influx in these types of stores? Or has the market begun to settle itself out? One of the arguments I offered before was oftentimes, in the case of commerce, you want to let the market take care of itself, unless there is some other characteristic that supersedes natural market growth and decline. I'm not hearing that we know a lot about whether new stores are applying or other stores are going out of business, other than maybe anecdotally or a little bit of information. What I'm leading up to is if I am going to go down the road of imposing conditions on commerce, I got to be very, very clear that these conditions are warranted and not interference in the natural business and trade. And I know that a lot of business people downtown want to have this buffer in place because they're afraid, and I get that. But at the same time, if we start getting into the precedent of beginning to say, bookstores can't be within 1,000 feet, or grocery stores can't be within 1,000 feet because somebody doesn't like that kind of store, am I going down a slippery slope? I don't want to be paranoid, and I don't want to go overboard, but if I'm going to impose a buffer zone on marijuana, I need to be comfortable that it's the same kind of buffer I would be willing to impose on other kinds of stores.
All right, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. According to state law, could we, may we impose a business license specifically on cannabis-related businesses and give to that category an upper limit of number of licenses that we would be willing to issue?
So Counsel Carpe, I'd like to split your question in two. The first portion, does the city have the authority to require marijuana businesses to acquire a city business license? Yes, I think you do. The second question about whether you can impose an upper limit on the number of licensees is a more difficult question. State law allows cities and counties to impose reasonable regulations on marijuana businesses. And so I think the question will come down to what counts as a reasonable regulation. There's not a lot of case law out there yet, and the term reasonable is not defined by the statute. My suspicion is that if a city or county were to impose a regulation that effectively banned all or a category of marijuana businesses from the area of that city or county, the courts would not consider that reasonable. Something less than an effective ban is hard to know. So if the city of Eugene were to require business licenses and cap that number at five for a city the size of Eugene, I'm not sure that that would be considered reasonable.
You said you don't know our existing number, is that correct?
I don't.
You don't have a guess?
An existing number of operating businesses right now?
Yes.
Historically, what we've found is that the number of actual open businesses is about half of the approved licenses, but that seems to always be in flux. But that's an approximation.
And so we have 50 approved licenses for operation at this moment?
Correct.
If we capped the number at 50, what would that, what would you think would be the likelihood of that passing muster if challenged in court?
I don't know that I can give you a percentage likelihood. I mean, I would say it certainly is more reasonable than five. It may be less reasonable than 100.
I'm not asking you to look into your crystal ball and predict the future, I'm asking for odds.
Geographic.
All I would say is, you know, it's been a couple of years since these licenses have been allowed to be issued. We have had...
For capital, we're three times any other market our size, right, in Oregon? In terms of not number density of stores?
At previous work session, based on talking with other jurisdictions, we were much higher. I don't believe it was three times as high as any other capital.
I think it was.
But it might have been, I don't remember.
In that previous presentation, which is why I said that could be a good argument one might make to a court, that we have three times per population more than any other city in the state. So capping it, giving it an upper cap isn't an unreasonable step we might take. I'm simply suggesting that I think there's an alternative method for getting to the same end, if we wanted to, that might be quicker. The second question set that I have is about land use. If this is put forward today as a land use code amendment, does that make our actions from this point quasi-judicial?
No, this would be a legislative land use code amendment. It affects enough businesses across the board that I'm comfortable that this...
So having said at City Club a couple of weeks ago that I voted against the idea the first time and decided I was wrong and brought it back the second time to this table, voted in favor of it, and it still failed, and that I would certainly be willing to vote for it a third time if it came back, that doesn't get me in any trouble being predictive in that way?
Bias is not an issue in the same way in a legislative amendment.
Thank you, those are my comments.
Betty?
Oh, thank you. I have the same question that has already been asked about other people who have already been approved would still be approved, is that still be able to open a shop? Is that what you said, right?
Correct. At this point, we would discuss that to see if there are any reasons why, but if we follow the example in the land use code with legal, not conforming businesses, once the state approves that business, I think it is probably more likely than not that we would honor that specific location and then include that, if there was 1,000-foot standard minimum separation, include that as one of, treat it as an open business. But that would still be, yet to be determined.
In my opinion, parking meters are hurting business more than marijuana shops, but...
Amen, sister.
And at least three others of businesses have told me they left downtown because of parking situation. And I know that, it's interesting to me that the same people who were asking for parking meters are asking us to protect them from marijuana now. But I pretty much don't like the idea of a sin tax, which it seems that some people think this is sinful. But, and I was very impressed when George Brown, who was formerly on the council, said that he, what he said was, I'm in the book business, the wine business, and the food business, and nobody's protecting me from competition. And I do see this as protecting people from competition. And I do think that if there are too many of them, they will start failing. That is, I tend to think that we don't need to regulate. I haven't decided for sure how I'm going to vote in a few minutes, but that's my, I thought it was really convincing when George said what he said about competition. And I don't think, I don't think we should be deciding whether people can use marijuana or not. I think eventually they'll be legal everywhere, and then we won't have to worry about having too many here. Thank you.
Alice?
Yeah, the map that we have here and the list, is this licensed?
Correct. So that are licensed locations by the state, not necessarily open businesses.
So this is not operating businesses?
Some of the, it includes both operating businesses and licensed locations.
But a lot of these dots are not operating, so it's a bit misleading to say they're all over the density they are. There's a potential for them to be this dense, but this isn't really how dense it is because we don't have an operating map. So can we get an operating pot store map?
Yes, we can do that.
I think that would show a different picture, actually, probably. The other thing about this is, when you look at the map, I mean, with the information we have, the horse already has left the barn. 72% of them are already within 1,000 feet. That's 36 out of the 50. And they already violate the rule that we're trying to impose. And so I'm sitting back wondering, what is it, the problem that we're trying to solve here? It sure looks like what we're trying to do is limit competition and deal with people's perceptions about pot stores. And both of those bother me from a government intervention standpoint. What would be next? Are we going to limit the number of Starbucks that we have because people started not to like Starbucks? So I agree with what Counsel Brown had to say before, and I still think that that's true. This is extremely interventionist move on a part of government to be able to go and do this. So what is different about pot stores and every other business that we have in the city of Eugene?
The old newspaper guy.
And that warrants such dramatic unprecedented intervention and protection from competition. The downtown pot store location that started all this third round, the one that was going to be at Willamette and Broadway, which prompted all of this, I went on Google Maps, and I just did a two-block search. There were 16 bars and alcohol establishments within that location, and nobody seemed to have a problem with that, although alcohol causes 15 times more problems with behavior and perception and all that than does pot, I believe. So interestingly, that didn't seem to be a problem for folks. I think the problem is pot's still new. It has some stigma attached to it. Like it or not, people of Oregon and people of Eugene in particular voted yes, that it's legal. And so I think the market is going to shake itself out over time. I think we've already seen that, and you know, the number of licenses has actually gone down six. So that's more than 10% in just a couple, in nine months. So I think it's starting to shake itself out. I think this is not a place where we should be very interventionist and be patient. I don't think it's a place for city government to intervene here. So, and then finally, I'm not sure about the wisdom of voting on this when two key counselors are missing as well, but... So I'm not supportive, again, of moving forward on this. I think it's just too interventionist and without a good rationale. You got to be consistent. If you're going to do it for this, what are you going to do it for when somebody says, I want to do it for my business?
Jennifer?
Thank you. I might be crazy, but we have buffers for liquor stores, right?
Those are administered by the state level, and so I am not aware of what those standards are. My guess is there would be a minimum separation standard, but I don't know.
We don't have code standards.
And we have no local code standards for liquor stores as far as separation. The state would, the state administers them, and I don't know if they have a separation standard.
Oh, you don't have?
I don't know that.
I don't believe they do.
They have, as I recall, and I looked at it a long time ago, there are some geographic location provisions, because they, but it's, but they're state-run, so it's a little bit different. It's, they're not, they can choose where they're going to locate versus, versus somebody coming in, applying, and seeking to locate, like a private liquor store would come in, apply to locate next to the state-run liquor store. So I, they don't have the buffer zones like we're talking about here that are outwardly regulating. They can, they make their decisions.
But they do from schools and...
I don't know they consider that.
Thank you.
Okay, second round. Emily?
Thank you. I still feel that marijuana shops are a different class. We do not tax locally alcohol or books or wine or anything else. So we're already, Eugene, with our 3% tax, is treating marijuana businesses differently. OLCC, I have heard that liquor stores are based on density as to how many you can have, but I didn't look it up. I don't really get why we want to limit the number rather than the distance, because then you could have all of them in two blocks, which might simplify things, but people who live farther away are going to complain, you know? How fair is that? I also think it's really important to be responsive to our constituents, and I am not hearing from anybody except the Browns at the Kiva that they're against this. So I think it's a different kind of business. I think that we've been asked over a year several times, many times, by many businesses to please do this. So my question is, what's the harm in passing this? Who will be hurt other than people who... Who will be hurt, other than people who want to have their marijuana stores right next to each other? And I thought this would be an easy no-brainer, but I was wrong.
There's very few of those.
That doesn't mean it's impossible, Chris. Chris, you're up.
Let me go down another tack. Do we have any information from the police department that there has been a higher number of arrests or incidents around or near marijuana stores?
So in July at our work session, police department did do some crime analysis. They found that the number of crimes actually happening on the premises, in the tenant space of these businesses, was almost negligible. They evaluated crimes within 1,000 feet of each of the business locations, compared with 2014, six-month period of 2014 crime versus 2017 crime, and found that during that period of time, some, in whole, crimes decreased by 25%. Some things did go up, like the amount of forgeries, and we assume that that could be related to purchasing. Some things went down, like drug possession. And so I could give you a summary with more detail that I provided at the work session in July, if you'd like. But that's kind of a very broad brush overview of that information.
Yeah. I'm of the opinion that it's extremely appropriate for a city to become involved in an issue if it has a health or a safety aspect to it. When we banned smoking in restaurants inside, that was a health and safety issue, not because some people don't like smoking. We strictly dealt with that as a health and safety issue. And so what I'm trying to get at is if I were to begin to say, "Well, I want to start imposing regulations on marijuana as opposed to bookstores or grocery stores," is it because there is a legitimate claim that marijuana stores result in higher levels of health and safety issues? And what I'm hearing is, we don't really have any information that indicates there is. In fact, anecdotally, it's possible that a marijuana store may actually have a lower incidence of crime than other kinds of stores, which to me is kind of like mind-boggling. But nevertheless, I'm not hearing that there is a health and safety risk from having marijuana stores within a certain area. So I would say, well, then why would a business downtown be worried or not want to have a proliferation of marijuana stores, other than just, I don't need to have them all over the place? But there's a Starbucks, seems like, right across the street from, you know, you walk out of a Starbucks, and you'll cross the street, and there's a Starbucks. So it's, you know, I don't know the number of Starbucks is a significant problem. I'm just trying to find what is my role in regulating marijuana businesses? And is there a health and safety issue? I'm not hearing that there is. Is there a legitimate commerce issue? I'm not hearing there's a legitimate commerce issue. Is there a concern that I've heard that, well, these marijuana businesses are going to go out, and they're going to leave a bunch of empty storefronts? I don't know. Businesses go out, new people re-rent, and if marijuana stores fixed it up, maybe it's a nicer place than it was before. I simply do not know. So I'm trying to say, why would a business person oppose a marijuana store for a reason other than it's a marijuana store? Is it more criminal? I'm hearing no. Is it because of the commerce aspect? I don't, I don't think so. Why? It's just because they're close to each other. I agree, there's a whole lot of pot stores. I get that. But I'm still reluctant to start imposing government into the natural movement of commerce, unless there is some compelling reason like health or safety.
Betty?
I thought the Starbucks was a good argument for the first time it was said. There are people who don't approve of coffee drinking, actually, and then there are another reasoning to be against all those Starbucks stores. They interfere with local coffee businesses. If we were regulating businesses, Starbucks is an excellent example of something we don't do, and they're, they are everywhere. So I think, I just don't think it's, that marijuana is that, there is the banking thing, but I haven't even heard that that's causing problems. We do need to change, there are movements to change the ways they can take care of their money. That is a big problem now because of, they can't, aren't allowed to use banks, but I don't see that we should be regulating.
Jennifer?
Thank you. This is, this has actually been very difficult for me, and I agree with some of the statements about regulating commerce, but ultimately, I will be voting for this suggested motion. One of the things I've learned since being on council that I had to be convinced of was how much effort and attention and time needs to be paid to downtown if we're going to expect it to succeed. And I think a large proliferation of marijuana stores downtown is not going to do that. I think we need more diversity in places where people will spend time and drift to other stores, and I'm not, I don't see marijuana stores as filling that role in a large capacity, so I will be voting for this suggested motion.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Jennifer hit this one on the nose. I would agree with her in that there's a guy who stands on the corner of 11th and Willamette with a sign. It's got arrow on it, and he goes like this, you know, because he's pointing to the store over there, right in the center downtown, and it says, "10 grams for $5." Okay? And the sign, you know, he's trying to get folks to know that's the price in that store. And there's a guy who owns a technology company in our downtown core, a couple of doors down, wrote me a little note yesterday, and it said, "I had to explain to my daughter what a gram was, my four-year-old daughter, this morning, and I can't stay, I can't keep my business down here when I have to do it like that." I think that the stigma is a much bigger issue. I don't think it's something to blow past. I think it's a very big issue for an awful lot of people. And I think that it has a very consequential impact on commerce. And this is about what kind of downtown do we have? How much time and money have we spent on consultants telling us how to have a downtown environment that's welcoming to kids and families and everything else? And this is the folks who do business down there saying, "Guys, if downtown is pot central, that's not going to accomplish the goal, and you've wasted all that money, and I'm gone." So for me, this is really plain, that the folks doing business downtown are saying, "You're creating an unwelcoming environment that we're not interested in continuing to do business, you know, we don't have a high interest in continuing to do business if that's what's on every other corner." And I think we should take that seriously. So that's one of the reasons why I'm in favor of this.
Okay, I have you on another round. I have Emily asked for one more round, and go for it.
Thank you. In my on-the-street questioning of the Red Caps and Sergeant Smith downtown, they seem to think that the marijuana dispensaries are not healthy. They attract a lot of teenagers because they can't go into the stores, but that's where the pot is. So they're there, trying to get people to get the marijuana. They don't like it. I don't have numbers to support it, but word on the street is that they are a problem, and more closer together, we concentrate the problem. Other cities do this, you know, respected cities have done this, so I don't think it's such a horrifying idea. And we do treat marijuana stores differently because we impose that tax. So to say, "Oh, well, now we'll do it to bookstores," we don't treat bookstores by taxing books. Maybe we should, but we don't. And actually, I have not seen Starbucks across the street from each other, two blocks away, yes. If we want to increase business downtown, which I believe we do, and businesses find a proliferation of marijuana stores to be repulsive, then they not only will leave, but they will not come. Other cities do this, marijuana stores are different. The downtown population wants it, and I don't see who it will hurt. I would like to support passing a 1,000-foot buffer ASAP, and I hope other people will decide to go along with that. I don't see who it will hurt. Thank you.
Okay, I think--
You mentioned my name a while ago.
I didn't know whether you said yes. Go for it.
Yes. I would like to say just a couple of things. Downtown doesn't just belong to the merchants downtown, it belongs to everybody. And as for explaining a gram, I don't see what's wrong with a father explaining what a gram is. That sounds educational to me. And there are much worse things that they have to explain, like--
Tell me about it.
Yeah. You would know. That's all.
As a father, I sure do.
Can I, to speak real briefly to the motion that's in front of you that Mike set? So as it's written, what you're voting on is initiating the code amendment, and what one of the questions raised by Councilor Semple is if the desire of the council is not to have it a Chapter 9 land use code amendment that will start with the planning commission, the motion would remove those two words. So it would be moved to initiate a code amendment. If the desire of the council is to have it in Chapter 9 and start with planning commission and go that, then you'd leave those two words in. Just wanted to flag that.
Can't write an ordinance that, you know, I can't direct you to write an ordinance--
You can--
--and then come back and have a public hearing?
That's exactly what you're doing. You can just say, I mean, this is what it would be, so it would be moved to direct the city manager, if you want to be clear about a public hearing. If it's not a land use code amendment, which our code requires initiation, if you just want to say, "Move to direct the city manager to schedule a public hearing on an ordinance that requires new retail recreation marijuana businesses to locate at least 1,000 feet from existing retail recreation marijuana businesses," that is a motion that you can make, and it--
So moved.
Second. Okay, okay. Yes, to speak to that.
The motion is to initiate a land use code amendment process?
No.
No? What is--
It is to--
Code amendment.
The motion is to move to direct the city manager to schedule a public hearing on a code amendment that requires the new recreation businesses to be located within 1,000 feet of existing.
Okay. I'll give you two reasons why I will go ahead and support this. One is it's moving through another process where people will have an opportunity to speak. A second reason I'm willing to vote for this is, surprisingly, the Chamber of Commerce, which is a commerce organization, is supportive of this. And if they're okay with a city government imposing increased regulation on a business, I'm willing to see where this goes. So I guarantee that I will vote for the code once it's, we've gone through a public hearing process. But to keep this moving, I will go ahead and support initiating this process.
I just want to make a couple of comments about this, which is that I also think this is a hard, this is a hard one. And I think that in principle, I agree with everyone who has spoken to not wanting to step into regulation if we don't have to, that it feels like overstepping the bounds. But I also do hear that this is essentially a downtown Eugene issue. It's not really a citywide crisis, it's a downtown, and we have done a lot of things to invest in downtown. And if our merchants there are, and our businesses there are feeling that this is a barrier to continued success downtown, that we should listen to that. So just putting that out there, and I think we're ready for a vote. All in favor of the proposed code amendment? One, two, three, four. Opposed, two. So it passes, and thank you very much. I think that brings us to a close.